Well, we used, basically, last year as the base. The only big difference is, we do have an extra judge now, or an additional judge, I should say, six instead of five, so we did try to adjust some of the numbers that were number-sensitive to reflect that. And that judge came with a court reporter, who comes with a court reporter machine, which are not cheap and require periodic upkeep. And also a marshal, which that, we reflected that in our court security budget, that we have seven court marshals instead of six now. The only other thing is, we did try to boost our training budget, both for the marshals and for the judges. We've got some newer marshals, we've got some newer judges, and so we've been exploring some options to get people some little bit better training, up to speed. Other than that, I take anybody's questions. One thing, the jury script mileage, they changed the statute, as you know. And we had an option to do something, but they did change the mileage too, which if we really have to pay all that, could substantially increase that expense. And I don't believe it's going to happen next year, but at least in the next two to three years, we have a jury trial that's going to be brought from Platte County that'll need to be sequestered, probably for two or three weeks, which is going to be an enormous expense. But that's not reflected in this year's budget.
Are we reimbursed by Platte County at all?
No.
It's our trial.
No, it's our trial. A judge will remain nameless who's retired, decided that would be the way to go, which he's probably right. It was a, it's a high-profile murder case, which there was a lot of publicity, so. And that's probably set in stone, but maybe not. That might be more up to the prosecutor than to the judge.
Think the other one will take place this year, this coming year?
Probably. We also have another trial, which I believe is going to happen where the order in that court is that we're going to bus a jury from Pulaski County to here every day, which is also going to be an expense. I don't have as good a handle on that one as to why that occurred, but it's a little bit out of our hands, because it's an out-of-town judge who ordered. And that's just on my end, the court services. Mark Eichols is here to kind of speak up for his portion. Judge Walker has traditionally kind of overseen the pre-trial, and so that's why he's here. And of course, my good friend Toby Myers here to talk about the juvenile office, which is actually under the court system as well. But if anybody has any specific comments for me on the part that I know most about, I'm open to hear it.
Can I just say something about the jury? We've been putting in like $65,000 the last few years. We've never come close to that, and just in case you get a big, but I think, you know, I'm not the county auditor anymore, but we've talked about, I think that $65,000 is still if you're okay with that, it's kind of a placeholder number, should cover. Sounds like that should cover anything, everything in the upcoming year.
I guess I would just make a comment or two that on the pre-trial services, there's some individuals that they were requested to receive the increase, the pay increase, based on what the state had done with 1% for every two years of service. You know, I'm aware, we've got county employees working with state employees, but, you know, that is something different for this group that may not be done for other groups and everything. Toby, are you going to speak on yours?
Any.
Okay.
Well, as far as salary goes, I know that you all are looking at that issue across the whole county, and we've just, I think we anticipated, for the most part, just whatever COLA you all come up with.
Pre-trial as well?
Yes. Pre-trial and marshals, with the exception of the head marshal, which Holly Butler, who's also with us today. Holly's paid by the state. The county employees would be the court security men, the marshals, and all the pre-trial people or county employees. Other than that, everybody else that works over there is a state employee.
So Matt, Doug, it couldn't be here for a pre-trial, and Jay hit the nail on the head, just, you know, in his proposed budget, he did want to at least advocate for that other compensation plan. I understand PJ's presentation includes basically just a COLA. The only other number I want to call attention to is, he also asked for just an overtime setting, a number to cover overtime, because they do have to be on-call, they do have to be 24/7 all the time. They don't always use it. And in the past, we've been able to pay that, you haven't approved it as a separate line item. We've been able to pay that in part out of the part-time budget. And I'll remind you, this is the third or fourth year. We've had that in there with the intent to have that person share it a little bit with our treatment court. If you recall, about a year ago, we went through the interview process, he helped us, and we went through, identified somebody we might hire. Then we backed off that hire, and then our administrator changed, and we just didn't start back up that process. So that, that part-time person, which was approved at $16,000 the last several years, it's still in that $37.5. The other part of that $37.5 is Mary Ann, who's still a part-time employee anyway, but I just wanted to point that out. Those are the only numbers in pre-trial of significance. We do intend to fill that position, but we'd have to start the hiring post again. Mike, our new administrator, we've talked about that, but we wanted to get to this point before we do this.
I don't know how deep a dive we do here today on this, but I guess I do want to go on record that just because the state has proposed maybe 1% for two years, and we now have one group that is proposing it for the county, I don't see that as happening at this time, given that we are working on a salary study, and if it started cascade, I don't know if we can just handle it, without some real long-term thinking.
I agree with you.
But I didn't want to dive too deep into this, so it's quick.
I'm not going to argue against Matt's request, but I'll take the message back. Thank you.
For juvenile?
I don't know. We do have an audience out there somewhere, I believe, so.
For juvenile, the budget is, there's very few differences between the '25 and '26 budget. I will note in the revenue line that the BRN grant is a one-time grant, so that line item will not renew. In the expenditure line, our communications line is going to increase because of the data in the phone bill. And then that really just leaves us with the salary line, consistent with what the court is asking. They would just ask that whatever the county does is consistent for the juvenile office. In the '25 budget, we had allocated two full-time attorney positions. When we were unable to fill the second position, we rolled all of that funding to support two part-time positions. One of my part-time positions is willing to go full-time in 2026, so I'm asking to restore that. So the difference between the '25 budget and the '26 budget is going to be that part-time position that is already filled. To offset the cost of that, we're willing to forego filling a deputy juvenile officer position. And then the funding for that position would cover the part-time attorney positions and the four adjustments to salaries that I've requested. One of the adjustments is the lead attorney would go to $80,000, as agreed when we hired him. The second legal counsel position would go to $75,000, and her part-time status she makes would make $41,000. So going from 20 hours to 40 hours would be about $80,000, drop it back to $75,000 because of the benefit package. And then adjust the superintendent based on years of experience, she has her doctorate now, to $75,000, and the chief deputy to $80,000. So years of experience, she's been with us for 20, 20 years.
Chief deputy to what, Toby?
Chief deputy to 80. Could she like send that to you?
Yes.
Can you make sure Don gets that email?
Yeah. Yeah. One from Judge Granger, from Toby.
All of it. These things I talked about.
I sent an email on August 6th.
Is yours dated 8/13?
So I, it came on August 6th, and I resented to you on 8/13, yes.
This is the one with three adjustments in the adjustments column.
Should be four adjustments, the chief deputy juvenile.
I'm sorry, four.
Yes, yes, sir.
Toby, on the professional services, there's no change in the request, but last year we spent around $150,000, and year-to-date, we've spent $89,000, and that's a 292.5. Is that still an appropriate number for that?
That is, that is still the request. We are going to attempt, we're going to watch how the budget plays out this year. We would like to take that contract amount to $75. Last year in the budget, we worked to decide if we were going to open billing and they could bill for all of the work they did, or if we were going to increase them from $50 to $75 an hour. We opened billing but did not do any increase. What we're hopeful is that we can maintain that amount, but now do the increase. We're having significant problems finding people to do the work, so we're hopeful that increasing it will be in line with what surrounding counties pay, but we could still work with just the number that we've already got in the budget.
You're talking about attorney fees, right? Outside attorney fees, yeah. That, okay, that's what, Jay, you know, I remember that last year, but Jay wasn't here last year, so.
In the note section at BSA, there is an indication that it's at $75 an hour instead of $50 an hour, and that's the goal as we continue to monitor the budget for this year. But we've really struggled to get attorneys for our cases because the pay is so low.
I'm just waiting for you to be ready for me.
You go.
Yes. Unlike them, I'm not asking for anything different other than keep that part-time job. We still have thousands of thousands of thousands of files that we're finding, all the way back to 2008, that we're still dealing with, where, right, the part-time help is used to verify those files, get them entered into the system. I had three part-time paid by the county last year, and they were all high schoolers, so they're all back in school. But I have nobody right now, so I'd like to keep that. I know we shredded almost 122 boxes that were found in the jail a couple weeks ago, and in the basement of the courthouse, and we've got plenty more to go, so. They help with that kind of stuff, they've shredded and verifications. But other than that, I'm fine with my entire budget. I know you keep asking when we're going to be done with this, I'm trying. I'm finding 2008 stuff, yes, so.
What's hard, I know that dealing with the budget for this group is a little different than dealing with the budget for everything else, timeline is. Are we, do we have a [inaudible]?
I think legally, you can't change anything after September 1st.
Yeah.
So you probably need to decide, what are you going to, decide that today, or think about it, come back later, next week? Are you going to knock down the salary, pre-tri, you know, things like that? You probably need to make the decision before September 1st. Are you going to, okay with Toby's salary increases above the COLA? Yeah, I mean, I think you need to specifically approve or disapprove that, hopefully you come to an agreement, then by September 1st. Otherwise, legally, you can't change, you can't change anything unless you want to go through the state judicial circuit court budget, whatever it's called, yeah, commission.
And juvenile too? Because I thought we've talked about salaries after the fact before and made changes to those.
Juvenile, I think legally falls under that. I know in my first two budgets, Judge Beadham said, okay, we're going to treat it like a department head, and we'll do that under the normal county budget process, but last year, he changed his mind and put it under the courts, so. But legally, I think it could have always been under the court process that we're doing today.
I'd like to do it at the same time. The rest of it, I, the salaries, I think we need to look at at the same time as we're doing the rest of the county employees.
Well, we can't wait on these salaries after September 1st.
They're not going to let us add to it?
No. Legally, he keeps talking about legal. We want to do it illegally, I guess we can do anything we want.
They're not going to argue about us adding to it, because they're going to be able to give somebody a raise. You can't change it?
Oh, you can add to it, I'm sure, yeah.
You can't change the budget.
That's what I'm saying, is after we go through the salaries, we're going to add to it. We're just not going to put that in there for now, because we don't know what we're doing with our people. And it's not fair to do the adjustments or any kind of raises on these if we're not going to do it for the rest of the county employees. So if you put the, put the adjustments and salary increases at zero, and then whenever we decide what we're going to do with it, much time, we go, and then we add it to it. We're not taking away from that. Because otherwise, we're stuck with it now. Whether we go in and look at the adjustments, just use Toby's for example, you notice some increases there. We haven't had time to sit down and look at that position or anything, we've got the salary study being done, so it doesn't make any sense at all to add that to it right now.
One thing that can always change is COLA. I mean, that's just, we do whatever final COLA you approve, that should apply to all county employees, court employees, everything.
You just said legally, we can't change our budget after September 1st. Sorry.
I think Toby figured roughly.
I think we've always made an exception for COLAs. The final COLA goes to everybody.
Exceptions do the rules now?
I don't know. Ask the attorneys. He's a private citizen.
So I'm just, salaries is the part that I'm up to, I'll say later.
And pre-trial release, I don't think we can match the state. I don't think, I don't think it's an option. COLA, yes, but.
But we don't have our COLAs.
No, we don't.
We're not necessarily matching the state's COLA either.
Yeah, we'll see how generous Jay is.
Well, historically, we have not adjusted the salaries until we get to the end of the budget and see where we're at with it. And the auditor, most time, will put something in there, a fair estimate.
I think courts will.
I don't think you're registered. I mean, then those four things weren't going to answer the issue.
Given that the COLA is a placeholder, and maybe we asterisk the COLA and say, whatever it is for the, what we apply to this.
I mean, we've always put the final COLA to the marshals and the pre-trial, and Pringer, yeah, after that was approved, yeah.
We've done adjustments after September 1st as well. So if we did it illegally, then I still ain't going to be in jail right now because we broke the law backwards, so. We're sure of that.
In my three years of doing the budget.
It's going to be a long meeting, so I'll take the night to tell you that.
In my three years of doing the budget, there were no adjustments to the, we agreed upon, of that COLA for pre-trial and, or marshals. Pringer kind of changed last year, like I said. That was done with the courts last year. And you approved all those adjustments for the youth, what do they call them? Specialists before September 1st, so.
Jeff is right. Before the last couple of years, before yours, they never submitted it early enough to do this.
Yeah, Pringer was always done as an department head prior to last year, after September 1st, so.
And even the courts never did until the last two years.
Well, we want to approve everything but the salaries, and do the salaries next week?
You can do that if you're ready.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I may not change the salary next week either.
Yeah, well, I know, but I mean, that gives us.
So, yeah, we can move on from that part of it.
Yeah, but that way, we don't, you know, we're approving these.
And the salary to be reviewed still includes the adjustments, the separate.
And again, we would, we would have to make that adjustment by, before September 1st.
Toby, I think the pre-trial had some that were trying to base it on the state changes at the 1%. Is that considered a COLA? So, so those two would be the ones that we basically talked about. It's not a whole lot, but it's just, until we really know we're doing it with the rest of the county employees, I don't know if it's fair to them either.
Judge Green, correct me if I'm wrong, but after that salary study comes in, if there's adjustments you and the commission can agree on after September 1st, that's, that's fine, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any big problem with that. I think the way we're set up is that she put the increases in her proposed budget, and then if you all don't vote for the increases that she wants, then it would be up to us to decide whether we wanted to appeal your decision or not. And if we didn't appeal your decision, it would stand, but there's nothing that would prevent us from doing it later.
She's shifting some positions around to compensate. That's been happening with other departments and things like that, so I'm fine with that, but I.
I will just open the door for the rest of the departments to.
Yeah, I know. I'll try a motion here and see what happens. We adopt the budget as presented, except for salaries.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. A footnote is that by honor before September 1st, we had the salary number adopted, and it had to be part of the motion, I guess, but that's what we're in, right?
So we would add.
Thank you, guys.
Make sure everyone has signed the sign-up sheet that's in here, if you haven't already, please.
Okay. Now, we will go back to our agenda, and if you have any minutes, some reports received and filed.
Do we need to wait till [inaudible]?
That's three minutes.
Okay.
So it's.
Close enough.
Yes, sir.
And you guys, we have a new sound system, so it does pick up every bit of conversation. Thank you.
I see what you did there.
Yeah. I texted Lily, and she said she could do.
Oh, jeez. We can do our. It's 8:58, it's 9:58 Eastern time.
Maybe I just sent you the one.
On clock somewhere. Cut your show, Shaven.
Still.
Yes, yes, let's go ahead, and we will get the show on the road. Minutes of reports received and filed.
Yes, we have the Treasures July 2025 reconciliation report.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings.
Well, already, I guess, well, already, I guess, on the agenda, which is Donuts versus All-Dragger's.
Yeah, we have Clover Kid coming up in September. Clover Kids are five to seven-year-olds, and enrollment starts in October, so if you know any families with anyone five to 18, or if you're a little bit over 18, you can come volunteer for us. We need project leaders in all sorts of projects. Thank you for having us.
And then the only other thing that I'll add to that is, I've got copies of this new sort of report that we're working on, that's our REACH report. It's a real condensed version, normally our annual report that we bring to you guys. You know, you can flip through, there's several pages to it. I'll leave some extra copies here too, for anybody else who's interested. But this is just a real brief snapshot, focusing primarily on impacts and how many folks in the county were reaching in a given year. This data is for 2024. It was polled earlier this year in March, based on the reporting that we do and that we collect internally. And so you can see how many folks, specifically in Cole County, are reached by our Small Business Development Center, 4-H, Ag and Environment, Health and Human Sciences, Business and Communities, First Responder Education, and Continuing Education. So it's just a nice, condensed, little snapshot of, of the impact that MU Extension has in the Cole County area. Do you all have any other questions or feedback for us? Because like you said, I know you've got kind of a jam-packed agenda today, so.
I was, I was interested in the Clover, because at the Country Ham Breakfast, we had some, some young people, that hams and bacon was almost too big for them, so I did, that's, and I thought, how, how young do they, they start in this? So age five, they can, yeah.
Yes, they can start doing hams at age five. They can't start selling them. They can't start selling them until they're eight.
Even eight's pretty.
Some of those, carrying that ham, that was, yeah. It's good. Start them out early.
Yep.
I think that sent an email too about the 100 miles and 100 days.
Yes.
Sam's been riding his bike, so we need to get him signed up.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was going to volunteer. You, you're the, you, you're the senior commissioner with, with the time. So I think that I would vow to you, sir.
Well, anybody, anybody can sign up for 100 miles, 100 days, and it's not too late to sign up. You can still log your miles. It's not like you have to have them in by a certain point, and that program runs through mid to late September. And the email that Kathy did send out is we're going to be doing a walk around the Capitol in September to log some, some of those miles. So if anybody wants to come onto that, you're welcome to, and we'll have that up on our social media and everything for more information. Also, Jeff, you jogged my memory. There is another small update. I know that at our council meeting in early August, one of the things that I touched on was the fact that in the federal budget reconciliation bill, they eliminated nationwide the SNAP Ed program. And because of that, there are quite a few extension staff, particularly our nutrition program associates, who received notice this past Friday that they were being laid off around the state. However, we are lucky enough that Dawn Sevian, who is in the Cole County office, is being retained at this time. So we're very happy to hear that because when you look again at this reach report of the SNAP Ed contacts, that's a majority, Dawn, like she is a hard worker. She is out there busting around the county, reaching out to people. And so we're very glad that she will still be with us. Her job focus will change a little bit because now that the SNAP Ed program is eliminated, that simply doesn't exist anymore nationwide. But she will still continue to do other nutrition outreach programming through the EFMP program, which is Family Nutrition Education Program. So if you have any other questions about that, I'm, I'm happy to get more information.
And I should register, since I do like 85 to 100 miles a week on my.
You could win, you could win a Fitbit. They're trying to entice people to participate. Well, then you can give it as a Christmas present to someone.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we will move to our next presentation. Architects Alliance to present update on the Cole County juvenile.
Yeah, so thank you, commissioners, for having us again. What you have in front of you is a half size set of the design development documents. So this is a compiled set after our August 1 submission, plus a few revisions since we met last week with Toby's staff and some other Cole County staff members to hash out some of the inner working details. To give a quick, high level summary of what we're doing and where we're at. So essentially, this is the first phase that we have completed since we've moved on from the schematic design phase earlier this spring where we identified some budget options to pursue and whether or not we needed to cut ultimately moving forward on this $14 million target. So as of now, we are still on target for the 14 million. We don't see any glaring issues now. Obviously, Nappols is here with me right here, Mitchell. He'll give a brief summary and some timeline expectations of what, since schematic phase, this is the DD phase. So as we completed this, we're prepared and are already working into what we call the CD phase, the construction document phase. So what we've done is basically we, we came up with concepts, the plans, the programs and schematic. And now this phase is literally as itself explanatory in the title is develop that design. So we went through, started selecting systems, HVAC systems, mechanical components, plumbing systems, starting doing the design work and coordination with structural and foundations, what kind of steel joists, how we're going to simplify the structure and constructibility of this. With a number of other things included, keep in mind the security, fire protection, and some of the specialty consultants like food services and anything related to IT electronics and video surveillance systems. That also includes controls for both the detention side and the respite and residential side. So there's basically a secure side of the facility and then a non-secure side of the facility. I won't go page by page because we just did that last week and that was three hours long and we still didn't complete those. We're going to set up separate meetings to talk about exterior and interior finish selections, which we've already compiled a range of different materials and types. We'll share that, those documents with you guys as well. In addition to that, we'll set up another meeting for the coordination of security so that we make sure that all of the buttons, locations, who has what controls and what offices, camera locations and visibility. We're going to go camera by camera, station by station to check that off. So we essentially have three other meetings that we're going to set up with Toby's staff and Cole County staff. And then as we have those, we will plan to do any follow up presentations with Cole County Commission. So as we move into the CD phase, we anticipate November to be our CD submission, so before Thanksgiving. So between November 1st and 15th, we plan to have this wrapped up, signed and sealed and ready to hand off to Nappols for the construction documents to get hard bids. They are currently working on some budget numbers now with this set that we have done. So they did preliminary budgets back in SD, which helped steer, steered us in the direction that we needed to go based on those numbers. And now they'll do this round and then a final round as they work towards getting contract negotiations for you guys to get this thing moving dark. So I'll just kind of do some brief skimming through the plans. If you look initially at the first part of this set, the G sheets, those are just general information. So that's going to show you some of the code requirements for egress paths, where emergency exits are, what's controlled, what are the code requirements, also some of the fire barrier construction that is needed in the separate units inside the facility, different wall types for both CMU concrete block and also metal stud with gypsum drywall. Another sheet shows you the different levels of security throughout the facility. What walls are deemed high security, mid security and low security. And then obviously, the, the respite and administration side has zero security. I mean, as far as, you know, more than standard. Then from that, that goes into the next discipline. That's the site work. So that kind of shows you the general site of what we have to work with, what's being proposed. And then you'll also see a lot more has been done to all these drawings. You'll see a lot of details that has been added. We started coordinating storm sewer location, rip rap, curb and gutter, all the topography, where transformers are going, where all the utilities are coming in, how we're tying all the downspouts from the, to get the rainwater, the detention ponds that are required onsite to, to hold the water, storm water. We also designated some areas where we pulled back. We revised the parking. And in doing all this revisions for the parking, this came in conjunction with us trimming back square footages from our SD meeting to meet the $14 million budget. That means we've reduced the size of the gymnasium or hard muscle workout area. It still looks like a half court, but we did reduce it substantially. And then we also reduced some square footages out of the respite units. So we didn't reduce any square footages in tight quarter locations in secure areas because we were told that that was a high security risk, and so we kind of avoided that. So we trimmed where we could and was feasible and then maintained where we had to. And, and that exercise alone, we saved a lot of money in dollars in site because we were able to lower the building by five feet, I believe. So that obviously is a huge amount of fill and grading that we saved on. And then we also slightly shifted the building so that we can accommodate that even more. That also was in conjunction with the parking. So that's why the parking's a little bit different with the pull around and some of that. We kind of shifted to get rid of some parking on what would be the northern side because that's a steep slope. So avoiding that fill. On the backside, we cut into that hill a little bit, but that gives us some of that cut and fill opportunity. That's where we designated backup generators and transformers to be located just across from the Sally Port. So it's in a visible area, easily accessible, but not able to, to bring high noise to the facility because we were going to tuck it a little bit closer, but we had concerns for noise. So I'm going to go ahead and speed past the rest of that civil work. It just goes into further detail of what all the site items are going on. If you move into the A sheets, that's your architectural floor plans. So you'll start seeing dimensions, grid lines, wall types, bubbles and all, everything that starts identifying tags to all the materials, doors, wall types and all the custom things that need to be done. These, these will all be indicated in more detail. So anytime that you see a section mark or a bubble, that's going to refer to a detail that'll expand on that later in the set. What we did do, with the exception of some of the detention side, is we squared up the building in the front. Now, it still looks like we have some undulations going on, but actually what we did, we had a lot more. And we tightened that up by reducing square footage. We were able to straighten out some of those walls, streamline some foundations. Technically, you know, there's some corners that we could square up and that in turn would add square footage. So we were doing a pros and cons of really where were we at to get the most box like structure to keep it simple for constructibility? But we still had some square footages that had to be maintained. If you go over to the next sheet, that's a roof plan. We actually did a lot of structural rework on how this building was going vertically. So we had initially in the schematics phases, we had a lot of different roof elevations, different parapet heights and stuff. We simplified that where the, the heart of the building is all one level. All heights with the exception of a few undulations that happened will be at the same level. The only areas that pop up higher than that are in four locations. So that is your gymnasium, which has to be a higher volume, Sally Port, which has to be a higher volume. And then we have the space over by the respite for the canopy that goes over that outdoor area. So those are the three main high volumes. And the other one is for the day lighting component of the detention center. We actually had almost like some penthouse style skylights that were coming out of that. And we were trying to keep it simple and talking with structural, it was actually easier for us, structure wise, to make that one sloped roof back to the parapet instead of having a pop up. So we actually just kind of raised a section of the roof and pivoted it. And that helped us with structural beam lines, also with MEP, with doing ductwork and all of that stuff. So we were trying to find ways that we also have to house all the electrical and mechanical components that get through these spaces. And so that's one of those areas where we, we trimmed and helped save some economics there. As we move forward into the two, A 200s, you'll start to see the exterior elevations of the building. So these are just the 2D flat panel views of this. We will show you some 3D, we're working on some 3D rendering so that you guys can help visualize where those materials are versus this. This can kind of bleed together and get a little busy. But we're going to have that separate meeting with finishes and for both interior and exterior. So we'll show you some more details on those as well as color, materials, and how we plan to actually assemble that wall. To give a brief summary of those materials, we wanted, one, we obviously have a tight budget that we're trying to meet. And then two, we need it facilitated at last and has curable domain as materials. So that's essentially masonry and, and metal panel. And so obviously, the more masonry you have, the more expensive it is. So we tried to maximize the metal panel usage that we can. Particularly on the backside, there's a lot of metal panel. The front has a little bit more masonry in the front as you walk up to the building. But the high volumes all have metal panel. And then a lot of the above window elevations is all metal panel. So we avoid structural steel panels over large openings. And really, it's, it's, we're trying to create a masonry wainscot that is the perimeter of the building to help against lawn care salts, snow, all of that good stuff that normally attacks the, the lower 48 inches of the building. So that's kind of where we're at. The, the roof will be an EPDM or TPO material for the, the flat roof. And then the sloped roofs will be a metal panel roof to, to shut that off. What we did in any of the detention areas is we did not use any masonry block or stone that creates ledges or points of grabbing so that they cannot climb, find points of escape, or even use it as a mechanism to, to cause harm. As you move through the set, you'll start seeing cross sections, like if you split a loaf of bread in half, you'll start seeing some of these where there's additional bubbles on those. Those are going to go later into the set for detailed wall sections that show how those are assembled. Right now, all of those materials are coming together, so you don't see too many notes and stuff on those, but they were actually currently being populated in our office today. And then as we go through the set, you'll see large schedules. So we, we have, you know, a huge amount of doors on this project. We break out which ones are secure, non-secure. We started going through with Trainer. They have developed the secure door schedule for all the specs, hardware that are needed for the specialized systems, access control, et cetera. We've also been coordinating with Loudatech, who is the security specialist, who is putting those systems in and tying that together. As you go later into the set, A 602, you start breaking out what the finishes are. That's the finished floor plan. We're going to tweak this a little bit based on what some of our comments are to reduce out some carpet and give a little bit more exposed concrete and then also LBT. So the main materials in this floor plan is color coded. So you'll see blue, green, some purple, orange, and then brown. Essentially, brown and gray are going to be your sealed concrete floors. Minimal basically impact on material cost. And then all of the admin area, we try to keep offices, especially for noise considerations. We do have sound bat in the walls to keep private conversations private. And then also carpet on the floors to help with noise transfer. There were some concerns about the corridors being carpeted, et cetera, for long term use, wear and tear. So we'll, we'll revisit that. And then we have LBT, which is a very cleanable surface, but better, more residential and field than concrete, which we'll have in the respite areas. As you walk into the facility, you'll have a little bit nicer materials in that vestibule and entrance. But that's, that's hardscape materials that are cleanable, wipeable. And then as you go into the facility, those materials soften and then ultimately you go back to, to hard concrete in the back. The majority of the walls and finishes, the admin side is going to be basically paint with drywall. And then the secure side is going to be exposed CMU block wall that has been filled smooth and painted. As you go further into the set, you're just going to see some, some elevations that get started when it's looking at some of the special locations where you have a lot of different glass windows, doors, ceiling elevations that are changing so that we're starting to coordinate all those systems. These will begin to get more populated as we get closer to our 50% CD set. And a lot of pages will be added to this set as well. We're about 90 pages and I'm, I'm sure we're going to break 100 easily. Later in the set, you start seeing ceiling plans, how we're doing this. Majority of the office locations and corridors are going to be a lay-in ceiling, acoustical, and some are going to be more wipeable. So kitchen areas, obviously, are going to meet health code standards for wipeable surfaces, wipeable ceilings. And then as we get into the detention side of the secure areas, those will be more hard surfaces. So gyp ceilings with high open to structure ceilings at the skylight locations. Also, open to structure locations are going to be where we're not putting any ceiling finishes in besides paint is the Sally Port and the gymnasium. Again, as you start going through these, some sections where you're starting to see some mechanical hoods and stuff populating some of these drawings. We'll actually get more coordinated as we go. The S sheets are the structural, so not to get boring there, but that's all the footings, foundations and everything that's tying this together. We're coordinating with all the MEP tanks as well so that piping and everything isn't interfered with some of the thickened footings and, and secure locations for pedestals that we need to have for some of the steel. M sheets are mechanical. That starts going into all the mechanical duct work, piping, supply and return locations, fire damper locations, trunk lines. Starts identifying RTUs. One of the things that was mentioned and brought to our attention is this type of system, whether or not having a large multi-ton single unit versus splitting that into two smaller units. And that would give you some redundancy in the system for if one goes down, for you guys to be able to maintain that system. We priced that out. That actually would be a $50,000 increase. So, you know, depending on how you guys look at that, you know, that's either a chopping block item because we're technically increasing the cost, or is it worth that? And so we've been. I don't, I don't.
I know we're only two units and they can be split in half, but what is the cost of, say, 50 ton versus 225s?
I honestly don't have that on me, but we, we can get back with the end and share that with you.
Is there would be some difference?
Yes, there is. And I think overall, when Nappols came together, Rebecca gave us a report on that, is that they found that this is about $49,000 difference. And so.
So what units, were those the rooftop units?
Yeah, so you'll see two units right here on page M 301. That's kind of right back here next to that. That's kind of right back here, next to that L.
That M002, there's six units, so...
Right.
So you're just talking, secure area?
Yes, just in the secure area, my apologies.
I'm not worried about them. Curtis, I saw some emails go back and forth, and I know Greg did drop this up, but you were shooting a $28,000 number.
Yeah.
This is 48. You want to spend 48? If we had it to spend, we would, but this is one that we probably had to pass on to state before we do.
Right. And with that, you know, if there's, you'll notice on the, not this front, this is actually, this type of document that we have is a working PDF, so you'll see these different note tags. So if you go through the set, as this gets updated every time I come back to the commission, you'll see different notes on here, and those are from the different disciplines. But if you were to look at the front, there's a blank area that says alternates, so we can identify, we don't encourage a lot of alternates because that's just, you don't get the best pricing that way, but if we have a targeted, limited set of alternates, where we say, hey, if we can do that, we can do this, maybe three or less alternates, we can target some price points for some savings or some options that pricing comes in good, and you guys are comfortable that you're going to like to choose that. We keep going through the set. The plumbing, that's pretty straightforward, all the plumbing lines and everything that feed water, waste. We did coordinate with Toby and their staff with their preferences on some of the floor drains. We're going to be revisiting those. They're anti-lickature, so you can't harm yourself, but we're going to relocate where some of those are, so staff don't have to squeaky some locations in case something unfortunate happens. We obviously have a little bit more secure-type drainage systems that are going on in the detention side than what we do that's more standard and typical on the respite side and office side. We also have grease, water, debris interceptors, and everything that will capture floppy stuff that gets put into the system. In the P drawings or P400, it's also coordinated with the special kitchen equipment. Then if you go further down, we start going into the electrical. That's all the electrical sight lighting. Some of the gate and control components is how you access the Sally Port, showing details of the electronic control systems that are required for the detention side, door access that goes back to the control system, control panels, switchboard panels, all that good stuff. Then you get into E101, that goes back into lighting, so you start looking at all the lay-in lighting, where the lighting is different. Usually, all the office and admin areas are going to have a similar type of lay-in LED lighting system. You'll have high bay lights in your large-volume spaces or higher bay spaces, so again, usually those volumes that I said that hook up, that's where you're going to have the higher bay volume lighting. And then the conference rooms are the only ones that have some linear lighting that goes over the tables. You just keep going back through this, you start getting into electrical and data locations. This is going to be one of those meetings that we're going to tie into, so that we make sure that each office has the right amount of data, whether it's for the state of Missouri data lines or the local county lines. We basically determined we need four lines, three dedicated and one spare, but we're going to go room by room with Toby and her staff. Keep on going through, you're just going to keep seeing where power is being provided to things. You're going to start seeing some sight lighting in the camera locations the further back in the set as you go. You start getting into the ES sheets, you're going to start seeing some 3D views of some what the control center looks like, what some of the other server systems and server rooms will look like. You'll also start looking at what the camera system types are and how many eyes, locations, mounting type, et cetera. Fire sprinkler designs for fire protection, pretty straightforward, we just put those where they're needed for hedge coverage. Then you get into the food service, so that'll break down all your special requirements and conditions and fabrications and equipment lists for the kitchen. That shows elevation views, so you can see what those look like on the wall. It also gives some isometrics and 3D views of some of the components. Same with the food server line, there's some 3D isometric views of those. And continuing on through all of that, you look at all the hood systems, fire suppression systems for the kitchen equipment. So that, as far as the drawing documents goes, that summarizes what our DB set was. So now, like I said, our next goal is the end of September, so I think the 20-something week of September, we're going to plan to do a 50% submission for CD, so that's just a stop and plot of halfway through the construction document set. We'll have some more follow-up meetings then, and then I can come and also do a dedicated presentation to the commission at that time. As a side note, as we do these other sidebar meetings, and if anything substantial changes or happens, we are more than happy to come here and set up some incidental meetings between the 50% and 100% submissions, so we can give you guys some updates, and we can share some of the interior finish selection packages as we walk through those, and we'll share those with you guys, too, so you can see what everything's looking like.
We're building this to current city code?
Yes, yep.
And we're looking at early next year to break ground.
Well, I'll let, I'll turn this over to Mitchell, and he can start talking about what he's doing with us and schedule-wise, but ultimately, yeah, we plan to get this done in fall, document-wise, so that we can hand off in whatever time Mitchell needs to get sub consultants together and get a contract teed up for you guys.
Yeah, so mid-November, we'd have bid docs out, and we'd have a five-week bid process for all the different subs. That could let us present a GMP close to the end of the year, first of January, depending on actual timing to issue docs. So at any point between then and what, depending on what weather is in January and February, we could do, actually start work on-site and mobilize, we could host a groundbreaking separately. The current schedule would be, we wait until March to actually get started with some site work after, if we have a tough winter again, so, and then have a 12-month construction period.
So ultimately, we could potentially get under contract by the end of the year, first of, going into January, depending on how the numbers come in, and you guys agree upon And if you're comfortable with those, obviously, we can schedule groundbreaking and get that going, and they can mobilize.
If the ground's not too fro, frozen too hard, we can...
Usually, you know, January and February isn't the best time to start doing footings and foundations, but obviously, some years are better than others, so...
We do have some long-lead procurement items, things like that, so we could get out there and get started and still be waiting on steel or rebar those items, so it is a flexible start, essentially, depending on when we'd start in January. I think also on the kind of budget controls, alternates, options, as we start to target items that maybe don't make the cut or you want to pivot to, make sure if it, like the RTUs, if it's impacting a lot of other design details, we probably want to evaluate that in these meetings and scenario and make a decision then, if it's easy enough to see final costs or even create a list of items we'd add later as bids come in. That's how we structure this, so it just matters how many people need to weigh in on each of the options and when we'd present those.
I have a question. First, thanks for the emails, because you guys are keeping everybody informed, and I appreciate that, because I know it's a pain to sit and push those out all the time, but the Sally Port doors, how tall are those?
They're 12 feet or 14. They're 12 feet, I think.
Just got to make sure we get a handle of them.
Yes.
And then, as far as the width goes, I don't know if you want that big enough for one of my jail vans to fit in there in case we have to do a mess. But it may be big enough now, I don't know, but it's just something I was thinking in my head, if we need to get, be able to get a jail van in there to take more than...
If you come to pick up the youth, what will you bring?
It'll be a patrol car. The only reason we would bring a jail van is if you were doing some type of evacuation. And you may have the capability or you may have the procedures to do that without me, and I don't know, I'm just, but I don't...
I don't have a contingency plan.
Yeah, so we probably need to make sure that the length of the Sally Port is big enough that we can not only get the jail van in there, but we can also open the doors.
I think we did do all that.
I think it is, too. I think we actually talked about this, but I don't, I don't remember.
Yes, and I'll verify the door size. I don't know what it is. It's a minimum 12, but it could be a 12 by 14. But nonetheless, yes.
So based on what I've heard, from the best-case scenario, from a budgeting point of view, operational costs would not start until March of '27?
Well, technically, it'd be once the contract started and they mobilize, so if they're good at the end of the year, and we get under contract either by December or January, then technically, you can start incurring cost immediately then.
Yeah, but operational costs. Not, I'm talking operation.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, Ms. Surge.
So it sounded like March of '27 was the earliest of thoughts that would be...
Spring of '27 would be, you guys are occupying it.
One of the things we touched on last week, Curtis, at the meeting, was the buffer.
Yes.
With neighbors, and just a little history, when we decided we wanted to go forward within the facility, the first question is, how much room do we have, how much rent? How big would the building be, and how much room do we need? My recollection is, we came up with 3.14 acres as the required acreage, so we started calling this pylon shape, 3.14 acres. This is over seven acres, and then we were able to obtain at a reasonable price. And because it's 3.14 acres, maybe a footprint, I'm not sure what we got down to here. No, I'm sorry, that's with some parking and so on. We've got, we've got a nice buffer with the neighbors. The neighbor to the north is Highway 50. The neighbor to the south is St. Mary's Boulevard, so there's really no neighbor. Left and right, this is a good buffer between those neighbors in both directions.
All directions.
Correct?
Yes. So you, basically, from the building to the nearest development apartment, there's 40, 80, I mean, 150 feet between them? And then, in that is, you probably have 80 feet of old-growth vegetation, so old trees and shrubs and everything, so, and then that's in a big ravine, so you have, you basically have a dual buffer from the residences, and then from the street, you actually have another buffer. Some of that will go away as we do some of this construction, but you'll still have a lot of vegetation that surrounds this building, so really, this thing will kind of be a hidden gem in that location.
That also gave us plenty of room for retention basins to the extent we needed for runoff, right?
Yes, yeah, so we end up using the valley side towards the north and towards Highway 50, and that's where that, because it naturally goes to the east and to the north, and so that's where that detention pond collects. And it gets natural flow from the parking lot, too, that direction. So yeah, otherwise, go, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I was going to comment, I know there's something in the paper about it. I haven't really had any questions here, it's been the liaison. I know y'all had the DD presentation at some point and stuff, so if I needed something, I would have just called Curtis, he's always been available and stuff, so I was just going to kind of clarify that. I don't know, Sam is more of a time is of the essence, he's getting in a hurry, chopping that to bid, because he wants a conference room with his name on it again. I just, I also want to clarify that on my behalf, I just might not speak for you to do that. Y'all have been readily available, NAPOLTS as well, so if there's anything we have a question on, and, you know, Harry is the liaison, I could, you know, correct me if you have, but I've just kind of been following our timeline. I think you can give him dates, right?
And come back in September if you could, give us a report every now and then.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll coordinate with you guys and just get on kind of a regular, every, you know, we'll hit in between each of these milestones that we're seeing more than before the 100% deadline.
Okay.
Just a little bit of information, the article in the paper indicated we would have a half-court basketball, but that's inaccurate. Original plans did have us with a half-court, because of course, we cut it back. There are some three-point shots in this.
Yes. It's not a full half-court, so, I mean, technically, it looks like a half-court, but it's a reduced half-court, so, kind of a convenience court.
Three-point arc is there, and it's a little bigger than that. The large muscle exercise requirements that Toby talks about on occasion, that are federally instituted rules, I guess, is that correct? We've got to have it, but the half-court is a casualty of less than half-court due to...
Yes, yeah. And so, you know, technically, and then that was a pros versus cons of square foot versus volume and try, which it did actually help us considerably, so we got quite a good number of reduction just from that and what that impacted the site, so it allowed us to do some site work, which was great. Yes. So in addition to that, for whatever reason, just as a contingency, we do have in-house, what we've already talked about with each of you guys, for some options in the future, and for whatever reason this gets tight, but we don't plan on it. So we do have options for potential value engineering to pursue. Our goal is to not do that and give you the building that you guys need and want, but if we have to, we do have contingencies, so...
As we broke up last week from the almost three-hour meeting, I have to think about the payers.
Yeah.
You know, one way to maybe be able to afford a little bit more is put payers out there with, you know, compliments of or...
Yeah, yeah, so I think we can entertain that and talk with everybody and get an idea of what that could be and how we can implement it, so, that'd be, that'd be good. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Curtis.
No, this is actually, it's going to be...
Can you just make a copy of it, or are you just going to scan it and...
I will give you, I can give you a digital, this will be a pain in the butt.
Yeah, we can't give out that, that's a security issue, so we can't give out a copy of this. Am I correct, under Missouri sunshine, so this can't go out to anybody but individuals that got a copy of it.
I just wondered, in the permanent minutes file...
Yeah, I presented it to the commission, so it's not, but whatever.
No, it's a security, you know, because it's got all the security electronics, it's got all that in there. You could probably burn a copy of just this front page...
Go ahead.
And get that to her, that way you can reference that something was done. I don't know if that would have anything in it.
No, this doesn't, this is just an indicator, a general cover sheet indication of legends and who's on the team. So I can have that, that way it's place order.
Can I request an agenda amendment? I do have Abigail from Architects Alliance here to discuss a proposal. It's the last item on the agenda, so just wondering if we can move that up a little bit. Does Matt be writing it?
I would disagree with it because he brought it up.
Glad you don't get voted.
Anybody who don't either, I would...
But we have some additional information that will feed you guys as well, so...
So whatever you got that you can give to the clerks on this, that's not including this security information.
I can, I can share part of this with you, so I'll send that to you.
I got three on the P that tells us that you don't have it. You don't have it for a while.
I'll come visit you.
Chief, let's go ahead and give you such you, and then we'll get back to... Appreciate that.
Appreciate it, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Still have Abigail Steck here with me from Architects Alliance to discuss a professional services agreement for a Phase 1 preliminary study of the renovation of the facility at South Ridge Drive. Just a little bit of background, there's been various maintenance issues that we've tried to analyze and adjust over the last couple of years at South Ridge, mainly with floor and water and some of the drainage systems. Also, on the EMS side, we've been looking at trying to remodel one of our facilities every year as a capital improvements project. So a couple of months ago, we tried to marry those things together and look at some of the longstanding legacy issues with the water damage and the floor damage in the building, and then also tie that into a project to re... and look at some of the longstanding legacy issues with, with the water damage and the floor damage in, in the building, and then also tie that into a project to remodel the EMS and the crew quarter side of the building. So we did meet with Abigail and, and her team to kind of talk about what the project would look like and the scope. We, we do believe this is going to be something that's, you know, somewhat complex and, and a little bit larger than just your average remodel. So we walked through the building and kind of developed a little bit of a list of what we wanted to look at. You know, a couple of the, the highlighted pieces are relocating the communication center out of the very small space that they're currently in, address the core drainage issues, some of the legacy mechanical issues with the ambulance bays themselves, some of the water and drain damage. Looking at the back mezzanine in the very back of the building, which is currently unoccupied and, and has suffered some water damage, and looking at how we can stabilize that or remove it. And then some exterior upgrades because, you know, the sides and back of the building haven't really had any upgrades since we purchased it. So Architects Alliance has provided this initial phase one proposal to do and develop that kind of menu of the items and, and the costs associated with it so we can proceed further. And the proposed fee for that is $10,350 with an additional $1,500 fee for rendered images of the exterior if we so choose. Of note, this is really where we're focusing our 2026 capital budget request. EMS has identified approximately half a million dollars to put into this project and then also would be looking at general revenue expenditures for the EM side of the building to, to meet that project need. So that's kind of where we're at. I just wanted to bring this to your attention, have Abigail here to answer any questions. We can talk about signing today, or I can put it back on the agenda, however you guys would feel. I know I didn't really have a chance to, to really dive deep in this with each of you, so just wanted to bring this and see what your questions are.
We did have a chance to talk about it, I thought to just quite a bit extent. And today we're just talking about the contract with Architects Alliance. We don't have any layouts, drawings, or really any schematics of the building over there. I think we, we did, when we moved you all up there to the front, we may have some drawings from that, but they're very limited, so I thought it was a good idea to do this and prepare to do something. The mezzanine area in the back is in pretty bad shape. If it could be fine for 20 years or 20 days, I don't know. I think we've got the water to be taken care of, that's not a problem right now.
Those are frozen water, all that damage up there.
So.
I think you bring up a good point is that, you know, the, the building has gone through so many various renovations. We don't have any as-built schematics of, of the building currently. So at least getting those on paper, even if we don't decide to do a project next year, you know, that, that helps us at, at least with, you know, maintenance and, and some of the other issues. You know, Brian recently did some work on the security system and the vendor had to come in and kind of hand draw their own schematic documents. So this would be helpful at, at a very minimum with that moving forward.
This is the 10,300?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Eric, make sure the electrical gets updated too.
We have mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers on this proposal with us, so they'd be verified, kind of doing a general walkthrough of the building and then also helping with feasibility if they see any issues with some of these projects and budgeting, of course, too.
Well, the health department and the state health department have those coolers written in some of their emergency plans because of vaccine and work storage.
So, you know, obviously we've been working with Abigail for upwards of three years now and, and her, and her team. I think they've done a great job kind of acclimating themselves to, to our needs as an organization and, and how our operations work. And I think that manifests itself in the, the design of, of the building downtown. So we're really confident in the product and, and feel that they have some unique expertise to kind of help us navigate this a little bit. So like I said, no commitment moving forward. We are with planning phase to try and identify some money to do this project and, and keep the momentum going. But regardless of what we do, this is a needed step just to, to even have those documents, so.
I think we have, what we have out there is something between a hidden gem and a black hole. And so this ought to define, you know, where on that scale we are and what we could do, should do, must do.
I think you guys all had a good point. A lot of our time is going to be spent just documenting what's there. We'll do a 3D model that could be used for a project next year, or it could be used down the road in a few years, depending on how your budget and everything works out for this. So I think there's some value to having that all documented and modeled.
And the trench needs to be addressed probably pretty soon. We only have, how many more metal plates do we have we can put on there?
So probably about a dozen more on there, but that's about it.
I know, we kind of discussed that too, and that would be part of the scope of this was to make some kind of recommendations on that, maybe get some ideas on what it would cost. And the last time we did it was just way out of hand, so had to get some other options. So we had to try to address that and get it actually drawn up rather than tearing into it and then going from there, so.
Do they complete trough drain, just do a drain maybe every 15 feet or something?
So I do have a proposal today, if you guys are willing to go or wanting to go that route, you also have a copy in your email, but Abigail's here in case you have any questions.
I'll, I'll make a motion to proceed with the contract with Architects Alliance for the renovation of South Ridge EMS station, phase one preliminary study. The price was 10,350 plus 5000.
Optional, yes.
Hold up a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go back to our agenda, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending your review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
Hold up a favor?
Aye.
Discussion of tax levy for 2025.
No, we were waiting for, sorry, like in this paper. Waiting on, for the new values via what the Board of Equalization had changed. So today is just a discussion. We did advertise the public hearing for next week, Tuesday. So I'm here to, happy to answer any questions, I know you guys just got this too. But again, I appreciate the, I, the counties worked very hard to get these new totals and it came in at almost nine o'clock last night, so. So here we are with the totals, the school districts, everybody gets the totals.
Okay, that's.
But we are just talking about the general levy tax here and the public works tax here. So if, on the first page, I'm not sure, is that the general or wait there? The first page is the new values, right? So this is what we got last night in the county clerk's office. And then the second page is the history of the assessment value. So it's 1995, just for your information. Then the next copy is the public works tax levy. What, once we have these totals, we put it in the calculation formula that the state auditor supplies to every taxing jurisdiction. So we put it, the totals in, and it says the public works tax ceiling is at .2745. Last year it was at 42782, so definitely down, the ceiling is down from last year to this year. And again, it's down basically because the assessed value went up higher than a CPI would let it go up. So when that, through this calculation, through the next four or five pages, you can see that it goes through the calculations the state auditor has in their portfolio. And because of the cost of living index, they have it at 2.9. So that stopped our ceiling from going up, even though, right, assessed value went up, the ceiling came into play. So, so this is the total. I don't know if you have any questions about that?
Well, not to get into it too deep, but the state tax commission comes up with that 2.9%. That's not something that we do in the county. So every county, every political subdivision in the state of Missouri has to live with 2.9. Generally speaking, a political subdivision gets to keep the new values to the extent they are due to new construction and if they don't exceed 2.9% for the other things in the road. So there is what we call a rollback. There's a rollback of the, you call it, what do you call it?
Tax levy, ceiling.
For who?
For public works or for the taxing jurisdiction.
Well, you call it public works, I guess really call it rollback here.
Okay, yes.
But okay, that's possible.
In their world, it's roden bridge, yes.
Yes, okay, so roden bridge, we have a tentative new number for the tax levy, which is lower than it was a year ago.
Yes, lower than it was a year ago and actually lower than it was with the values that we had before.
Got it. It's, it's to keep the county of Cole from benefiting, benefiting too much from the increase in the assessment.
That's right. It is, that is built in there to make sure that doesn't happen to any political subdivision.
Right, and, and there are about 20 political subdivisions scattered through this county. Or, let me put it this way, about 20 levies.
Yes.
Out there scattered around the county. And they're all going through their calculation now because we got the latest numbers late yesterday. And they were distributed to the various political subdivisions, schools, fire districts, library, Cole County residential services, go on and on and on.
That's right. So our first one is the roden bridge levy.
Right.
And then if you go back a few pages, you'll run into the one for the general revenue levy. Our general revenue levy is a little different because we do have that rollback tied to our general levy, federal revenue levy. But just speaking of the ceiling for general fund, the ceiling has gone down. From last year was 34, .3460, and it went down to .3418. So it, the ceiling went down, just to prove the point that the ceiling is going down. And it went down further than it did from the totals that we had before. But because of our rollback and how that's calculated in there, it's a balancing act between our sales tax and our property tax is what this does. So because of that rollback, we get to take off a .2717, which then I'm suggesting the levy for next week's hearing to be at .0701. So you can see where we were before the sales tax. Sales tax actually, it takes into account, I don't know, it's this page right before I got into GR. It goes back through the calculation of what we got last year in sales tax and what we anticipate to get this year, and it comes up with a rollback amount. And so because of the sales tax being lower than anticipated in the year before and the total being lower this year, then it makes us be able to balance out our levy with the property tax rate. So I don't know, it's kind of, kind of loaded, but.
This one gets very complicated.
Yep.
Due to the 60% rollback in back, whatever you want to call that. But at the same time, it results in a levy reduction.
A major levy reduction.
You say major?
Major, when, when you think of our ceiling as .3418.
Well, from way back, but from one year to the next, it's, it's.
What, true.
It's, it's this much.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And to the point that you may not, that rollback or the tax levy may get even small enough that you will have to decide whether you take that amount from the roden bridge levy or we just go on the zero for a tax levy.
We'll worry about that when we get to, when we're not there.
I won't.
Matter of fact, we're.
.07.
Further away from it than we once were, I think.
Right.
So next week, we intend to finalize these two levies.
That's right. So if there's any questions between now and then, if you guys will let me know, I can bring them up. The last sheet is what actually showed up in the paper. We did advertise the public hearing twice. Because it was supposed to be today, we did put it off till next week, so we did advertise it again for next week. So you'll open your public hearing and then you'll vote, close it and vote. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
Well, there'll be questions.
If there are any questions, the collector always has the answers, right?
He has answers.
Brian is my consultant, so I know I always have the right answers.
I gotta quit sitting here.
One, maybe two.
Okay, then we're going to discussion of position changes in the WIC department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent an email about this potential change. So our nutritionist dietitian position in WIC has been vacant for six months. And it's, we're not alone in that battle. Those physicians are kind of hard to come by because of their training and because of the salaries that the local public health departments and actually the state public health department pays. So DHS has made a exception or a change to their requirement saying that we can kind of dual allocate that position. Instead of just being a nutrition coordinator, dietitian, we can make it a slash competent professional authority, CPA, not accountant, but you know, competent professional authority, and they provide training for that position. So that's what we would like to do because that will open up some possibilities for us. And while we do that, we also want to change our breastfeeding peer counselor position to part-time. So all in all, it'll be a reduction in the salary line for WIC, but it will open it up for us to where we can get that position filled, better clinic flow. That's why Melinda couldn't be here today because she's working in clinic and without a, a full staff, it does make the clinic flow a little bit less efficient than it could be if we were fully staffed. So we're hoping by dual allocating that role, we can get it filled and we can have a, a full staff there in WIC again. So I would just ask for you to approve the dual allocation of that position and also taking the peer counselor role down to a part-time position, which I know we'll have to add, right now we don't have any part-time physician, so that will affect our budget line for that.
What kind of salary?
$21 an hour, which is less than what it is actually for the, for part-time.
For the slash physician?
No, for the slash physician, it'll stay the salary that it is now. We'll just add a title to it. So the nutrition coordinator slash dietitian salary will stay the same. The breastfeeding counselor position will decrease. And I'll go ahead, I haven't submitted my budget for next year yet because I was waiting to see if this was approved. And I did include the job descriptions with the email, is Sheila was copied on that, correct?
And when you said peer counselor, that's the breastfeeding position?
Correct. Any questions?
Basically, I'll come from F, one FT down to a part-time and then changing the title.
Yeah, changing the title, salary doesn't change.
So it's zero budget?
Well, reduction.
Reduction.
It's gonna be a reduction, so, okay. I meant to talk to you about this, I didn't get to. That was kind of the way it seemed like it was gonna be zero or a reduction.
It's actually a reduction.
I'm good, how do you feel about reduction?
Can you send that email to her?
I love it.
Don, do you want that email that I sent to the commission so you know?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll let you take credit for the motion then.
All righty. I'll make a motion to approve the position changes in the Wick Department as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Proposed easement across county.
You got an aerial pickle, like emailed you?
Yes.
Okay.
Do have one emailed me, but whenever you, somebody else wants to take it.
I'll give you guys a quick background on this. Yansky's own a portion, a small portion of property north of County Park property line, north of County Park Road there, kind of backs up to the property that used to be, Philomeni Gardens, now the church property also. But in 2005, an easement was granted across the county property, you can see by the aerial there, for them to have access into that property, is a landlocked property. The project had started in ninety-nine, according to Central Reserve Professional Services, who drew up that original easement across that property, but it was not acted upon until 2005, when it was granted. Quite a few members of Public Works staff were not aware even of this easement for a couple of years, but it was passed upon. In this past January, Kevin Yansky had contacted the county about the possibility of the partial clearing of that easement so they could start accessing the property for, for more use and to possibly put the property on the market. So, our staff went out and marked the easement, and upon marking the easement and talking with Yansky's, it's not in the best location in the world, nobody knows exactly why they picked that particular strip of ground to go across, but, so, in talking with them, we asked if they would be open to moving the easement further to the west then, which would involve a lot less filling, if they, you know, wanted to get their access road back in there, which they had been granted previously. Moving it further to the west would move it away from the parking lot that has been recently constructed over there, and would allow, excuse me, also account for a lot less grading and filling culvert pipe in that area, and it would be, it's in a better location, it sits a little better for all parties involved. It was also found in research on that, that the previous easement granted contained quite a few errors, they had some names transferred, some last name names were not listed correctly on that, so it wasn't the best document in the world either. So, this document would then also correct that, give away with the last one, and then Yansky's have prepared quick claim deeds that will relinquish any right of trespass across the previous easement. And we ran all this through Cole County Abstract as well, and then the quick claim documents were prepared through their lawyers, which I think was frank and dear, no, I apologize, frank and away from it, so.
I'm just guessing that they didn't want to go even farther west to the point, and that it got maybe pariered over there, no offense.
Further to the west, you run into a problem of making those turns, and then you roll, you end up rolling, you know, if there's a possibility in the future that, say, the county wanted to sell that, if they did a, you know, a residential area in there and they wanted to attain right-of-way, you get those radiuses that don't fit in as well that way, with alignment to the property. So, we would just ask for approval and signing of that, it'd clean it up quite a bit.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal of easing across County property. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, discussion of security cameras in the Health Department.
Hello, so I sent an email about this, but basically, after they did a lot of the work outside, we were checking, you know, the cameras to see if they were placed back on the building correctly, we did some adjustments, and then we noticed that one of the cameras was filled with water, so of course, it was not working, and noticed that there was four cameras on the inside of the building that were not working, so if there was like a power, you know, surge, or something to do with the water in the lawn, but we had Precision come out and give us a quote to replace the four cameras inside that were not working and the camera outside that were not working. So, I did send the quote, I have a copy for you, Don, but if you, we would like to get those replaced because we do use our interior and our exterior cameras. I would ask for that to come out of contingency, I don't have a line item in my budget for those type of items.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for the security LLC for the security cameras at the Health Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, MoDOT program order.
I'd like to ask the tableists till next Tuesday, we're speaking with them about increasing the grant amount, so I'd like to get on next Tuesday's agenda.
We can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, bids and contracts, approval and sign of Huber Associates agreement for our router replacements.
So, about any technology, you have an end-to-life, what's called an end-to-life for the device, and so, we have two devices that are getting ready to hit end-to-life, and they basically just handle the communications between the county and that respective department, and they're called routers. So, anyway, I've got two quotes here from Huber Associates, Jill reviewed the, the agreement, and it is on contract, so both of them are for the amount of seven thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents. One is for the Health Department, and one is for Public Works. I would ask that those be approved so I can get them ordered.
Out of your sales tax.
Uh, Public Works, but Health Department.
Yeah. Pay for their own.
Okay.
Probably come out of the sales tax, computerization as far as...
I'm trying to find it, refresh my memory there. Is that it?
It's coming out of your computers then.
Seventy-two eighteen, that's the one, right?
Well, yeah, there, the end of life is, we've, we've got to do something.
All right. I'm going to motion to approve and sign the Huber Associate, Associates agreement for the router replacements, and the total was seventy-two eighteen and seventy-two cents. Yeah, for, uh, one, it's free each, yeah, so it's seven thousand... All right, so there would be two of them? Yes, sir. Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bid award, signing of contract for 2025 concrete joint sealing project.
So, this project is to seal the joints on concrete streets that we have been repairing in recent years, and it is with Sweeten Sealing Services LLC for a total of seventy-six thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. I do have a long list of roads that we will be working on, but based on this figure, total centerline linear feet of roads, which is a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight feet, which equates to about nineteen point three miles, or total joint length of a hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-two feet, or twenty-nine point one miles. This is part of our preventative maintenance area to try to keep these concrete streets in good shape.
This is a sealing of that, that seam, I guess, and to, to then avoid having it removed and...
Correct.
We seem to have a lot of that in this county, don't we, these concrete seams?
We do, so with any, any concrete street, you have joints, or whether they're construction joints or contraction joints, however you want to look at it, it just allows the, the concrete to expand and contract, it controls where it cracks, and we're, we're trying, this is another new product that we're trying to prevent water from infiltrating through the pavement affecting the face, so that hopefully, we can extend the life of these pavements and not have to do these big concrete replacements that we've been doing in recent years.
I'm good. Got a contract too, you send?
Yes, sir.
I will make a motion to approve the contract with Sweeten Sealing Services LLC for 2025 concrete joint sealing project at a cost of seventy-six thousand four fifty-three point nine three.
Nine six.
I'm sorry, nine six.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. A bid award of 2025-22 video surveillance system enhancement.
So, we bid out the video system for the Annex Courthouse Carnegie and Maintenance Building, and we did have six vendors that submitted a response. Four out of the seven did not comply with our RFP, whether one of them didn't attend the pre-bid meeting, or they didn't propose the equipment that Brian wanted in the, in the RFP. So, we are going to recommend, moving forward with Minmo Telecom and Security in the total of two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred. They have a three thousand dollar trade-in for the old equipment, and the lift cost is included. If you take a look at their year two and three maintenance, it's, it's quite a bit lower than Netwatch. Netwatch for a year is twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for an annual total. Minmo Telecom and Securities for year two was six thousand seven hundred and twenty, and then year three is seven thousand two hundred. So, we'll come ahead in years to come with their maintenance agreement, maybe not upfront right now because Netwatch is at two oh four nine sixteen. Brian and Holly are here to answer any questions, mainly Brian, though.
Yeah, I'm busy.
That's Holly.
I'm in my, overall, we have a savings, though.
In the long run.
In the long run, yeah, and they're local, like that.
You didn't send us that new bid to ever, with that information, did you?
I thought Neil attached it, but maybe not.
Wait a minute, there is, I've got so many attachments that I haven't shown us, I'm sorry. We initially had this for last week, so it was...
Yes.
Had the third number, you got the contract too, then?
No, I do not have the contract for this one.
Okay, so you're good. All righty, I'll make a motion to award the 2025-22 video surveillance system enhancement to Minmo Telecom and Security.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Catch, Ron, Mr. Pugh. Bid award of 2025-26 fleet vehicle maintenance for the Sheriff's Department.
We bid out the fleet maintenance for the Sheriff's Department, and we had four vendors that submitted our response. Our recommendation is going to be a multiple bid award for 2025-26 with Donnie Braun and Sons, and then Big Old Tires. I do have contracts for both of them as well for signature.
That big tab should be attached to.
It opened a minute ago, and then I saw Sheriff on there, so I thought he tabled this on there, so we closed it out, so.
This is the first year that we've done a multiple bid award for this one.
Okay. All righty.
There's two contracts.
And Jill reviewed the contract.
So, we're gonna do the bid award and the contract today, then, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award the bid and sign the contract for the 2025-26 Sheriff's Department vehicle fleet maintenance with Donnie Braun and Sons.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, are they different bid numbers, or some, the same bid though?
They should be the same bid.
Okay. I'll make a motion to award the Sheriff's Department fleet vehicle maintenance, 2025-26 contract to Big Old Tires.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's all I have on my... I'm going to make a motion for standing for one here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I feel real short.
So, tomorrow, I get a camp, so I can swing by then, and then I'll...
Okay, we are gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order, it is Tuesday, August nineteenth, 2025, moving forward all of our usual things, and the Eastern Commissioner, Jeff Holcher, had set up this meeting, so I have to turn it over to you.
All righty, well, I think a month or two ago, we got notifications, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for like the first half of housing prisoners outside of...
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Two hundred and ninety-seven, so, that's almost double, I think, than what we were last year, so I wanted to try to get some conversation started about it, to figure out what we need to maybe try to do different, what we can do to either use our resources more efficiently, or we need to, you know, haircut the slack, you know, as the prosecutor's office is obviously under the commission, and, you know, if we get you more attorneys, is that gonna make anything else happen? Is there, I think there's a lot of moving pieces, but I just want to get a conversation started.
There are. I think that, right now, so I've had both my part-timers leave, I know that we've transitioned one part-time to a full-time, I think, for next year's budget, I'll probably ask to do the same with that second part-time prosecutor position, other than that, I really think we are okay in that regard. As far as, you know, cases taking any amount of time to get resolved, we do clear cases at a higher rate than the rest of the state does, combined by pretty substantial margin. We cleared ninety-nine point six for every one hundred filed, the rest of the state was at ninety-six for every one hundred filed. With regard to, and I'm sure Sheriff Wheeler would agree with this, at least to some extent as well, so we've got, what, how many, twenty, something on our account right now?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one on our account, and we do work with the feds and hold their people, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm not saying that's a bad thing that we do, I mean, obviously, you know, we have a pretty good thing going as far as an agreement with the feds to house inmates here, but when you're talking about a certain percentage of the jail population constantly going to that, we're gonna always end up, I don't think it matters how quickly we do clear cases, you're always gonna end up with more than a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty people who probably need to be in the jail at any given time, and whether that's people coming in for a weekend to sober up because they were driving drunk or running around drunk, whether that's, you know, someone who's charged with a murder, or robbery, or assault, or something like that, whether that's someone who keeps getting let out onto... a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty people who probably need to be in the jail at any given time. And whether that's people coming in for a weekend to sober up because they were driving drunk or running around drunk, whether that's, you know, someone who's charged with a murder or robbery or assault or something like that, whether that's someone who keeps getting let out onto pre-trial or some, or just our award or something, but keeps picking up new charges every time they get out, and eventually it's, hey, you're gonna just sit there until your trial happens. I think for a county of this population, you're always gonna have more than what our jail really has the capacity to hold right now, who's gonna need to be in jail for something.
But, no, I'm trying to figure out, because we got so many of them that we have housed somewhere else. We've got, how many, what's our count on pre-trial, at least by averages, about one-eighty? For some reason, I thought that we're around a hundred and eighty. And so if you count those, that could be sitting over there as well. Those are non-violent offenders, we've got a program, and we spend, what, quarter million on that program too, so we're pulling a lot of money. Either people gotta quit breaking the law and going to jail, or we gotta figure something out, but.
Nothing we can do about that part, unfortunately, so.
What was it? There was some numbers in the paper not that long ago on how many cases, trials we were doing, and it was like three thousand?
Yeah, that's the number of cases we file every year, and most of those are gonna be misdemeanors, so typically not someone who's gonna be spending any substantial amount of time in the jail.
I think there's been an increase in felonies though, I mean, I think you.
There's, the felonies have gone up, but the majority of cases we will file in any given year are gonna be misdemeanor.
Well, they were comparing us to Cape Girardeau, which county, which, with MAC, when we go to MAC, we kinda, we're, we're equal just about in population, we're both first class, and they were thirteen hundred or something like that.
I, no, there's no way Cape Girardeau only filed thirteen hundred criminal cases.
Yeah, but.
Maybe they might have filed thirteen hundred felonies, but.
I was gonna say, we, we, it seems like we have a lot more.
We do not, generally speaking, file, I mean, it's gonna vary county to county, you know, you've got a hundred and fifteen different prosecutors in the state, and everyone's gonna approach things a little bit differently. But as far as the other first-class counties that we kind of like to use as our metric, I think we're pretty well on par with what those guys are doing. I'm in regular communication with the Cape County Prosecutor, I know, I know there's no way they only filed thirteen hundred cases last year, so.
I guess I'm just trying to, and I'm looking in my own mirror here, I can't control what state or anybody.
No, I understand.
Defender, and so trying to figure out, and I know you're not gonna believe this is coming from me, but if we need to spend some money to save some money, then if, if there's a way we can do that.
Is this thing already?
Unfortunately, it is. You're gonna be able to use this when it gets me.
Uh, so.
That's why I was kinda asking you to start off, or throw you.
Sure.
If there was a way we could.
I mean, I could, I, it would benefit me to be able to put that final part-time prosecutor as a full-time prosecutor. That would go a long way just to sort of alleviating some of the caseload on some of my other assistant prosecutors, because we do have large caseloads. I mean, I think every prosecutor in the state is always gonna tell you they could use a little extra help.
So you still have one part-timer then?
No, so Renee.
You have two part-timers and went to.
Two part-timers who have both since left, one part-time went to full-time, and it would be great to turn the other part-time into a full-time. And leave that part-time position open to where I could fill it with a part-time victim advocate or a part-time investigator to help on some of the, you know, support staff who are also very busy. I think that, you know, there's always all this talk about, you know, the courthouse itself, this and that, and I guess one thing, the issue is not just on the criminal side of things, you have the issue where we've only really got the ability to do one jury trial at a time, and that includes civil as well. And so you've got judges having to juggle both their civil stuff and their criminal stuff. I think most courthouses, you should be able to, depending on what sort of burden it would be on the prosecutor's office due to, my office could probably handle doing two criminal jury trials at a time. Anything more than that would be a significant strain just because of the size of the office. But there shouldn't be any reason, a judge shouldn't be, one judge shouldn't be able to, or be able to be hearing a civil jury trial while another's hearing a criminal jury trial. That would be, I think, something that would be pretty helpful, at least on their end. Because the way it is right now, everything funnels through that big Division One courtroom as far as jury trials go, and when you have to stack every single judge's criminal and every single judge's civil through that courtroom, it does create a bit of a bottleneck in that regard. A crying one right now, so.
Size twenty twenty, but several years ago, when we looked at building another courtroom, a big one, and regrettably, we didn't have to do that, so.
Other than that, I mean, obviously, we do try to get our cases moving as quickly as possible. There has been a lot of turnover for the public defender's office recently, which is obviously not something anyone can control, and those attorneys have to be able to get up to speed on their cases and everything like that, so certainly not blaming them for any backlog or anything. I mean, being short-staffed is what it is, but it sounds like they should be up to fully staffed here in the near future as well. I was talking to Rebecca the other day about that.
I know we've talked about, well, not a whole lot, but since we're getting another judge, maybe having a courtroom somewhere, or you know, some of a makeshift one for maybe even temporarily to help.
I think that Judge Green and Judge Stumpy are sort of sharing the main court.
So every judge is using that courtroom for their big criminal law days right now? Every judge? So the Fourth Circuit judges are all cycling through that courtroom for their law days, which are once a month.
Again, that's where I was fighting it, kicking and screaming like, we can make it worth what we got, but if.
Yeah.
We're going into half a million dollars housing prisoner somewhere else, but we could do a temporary courtroom somewhere somehow, or I don't know if we can do it at Supreme Court.
I tried that when we were putting new windows in, and it was, I forget how many thousand dollars a day to use one courtroom, and then we also had to pay their, their officers and things like that, so I mean, it was so exorbitant that, that the federal, yeah, I, I thought, well, you know, maybe we could work together, but I ended up talking to a judge in Kansas City, and he's like, no, no. But, and then Judge Beadham and I had looked at Nick Bonacco's office to see if perhaps we could put a courtroom over there, and well, for one thing, you don't have the bathrooms, they, they have one little elevator, the security, you would have to have security there besides here, and to, to adapt it to a courtroom, it would have cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we still would have had, you know, they just had, it, it just didn't have what, what it would be required for a courtroom.
One thing that I have also thought of a little bit that might be helpful, and John can probably speak to this as well, but a lot of people end up back in the jail on probation and parole warrants. If it's a parole warrant, there's nothing we can really do about that, but if it's a probation warrant, sometimes the judge kinda does it on their own motion, sometimes they kinda defer to us on that, but if someone's in custody on a probation violation, we can try and get that set as quickly as possible, and if their probation's going to be revoked, I've talked to the judges about maybe trying to get these set more quickly, and probation's going to be revoked, then they go back to DOC or wherever else and get them out of the jail and get the case moving more quickly. But a, a good amount of what we do is not just like the criminal cases that we have and file every year, it's also the people who come back on probation violations and things like that.
Is there a way for us to help with that, or anything we can do with it, or is that?
No, not really, it's just a matter of seeing if the judges collectively would like to start setting those for hearing more quickly. I know a lot of judges around the state like to do that, because it, most of the time when you're talking about someone you're looking at revoking on probation, it's because they picked up a charge, so you can take care of the probation violation and the new case a little more quickly when the probation matter gets taken up first, is my experience. Some judges, on the other hand, prefer to kick the probation can down the road until the new case is resolved, and that's sometimes where you run into an issue of it taking a lot longer. My preference is always take up the probation matter, get that done, maybe we also get the new case resolved a lot faster too, and at the very least, we've got them out of the jail and either in DOC or wherever.
We've talked about comparing ourselves to Cape County, or maybe there are other peers that we should be comparing to, but what brings us here is the, the cost of housing prisoners out of county, that's sort of what kicked us off, right? So do we know stats from our peers with respect to how many prisoner days a like-sized county like us buys or stays somewhere else? We're, we're concentrating on the dollars, but it really is a result of the days and the price per day that we're housing somewhere else.
And you're always gonna have, at least to some extent, I mean, maybe not, you know, twenty-one on our count, but there's always gonna be some amount on our count, and that can be for a variety of reasons. If we have a trial coming up and we've got one person in the jail who's getting ready to testify against the other one, we might move them to a different facility for safety reasons for a short period of time, I know we've done that before, that kind of thing, but.
We, I, I don't know, maybe the sheriff could help on this, but the fact that we have, is it a hundred and eighty beds?
Yes, sir.
You cannot, you cannot be a hundred percent.
No, never.
Because you never have the right mix.
That's right, I gotta be able to classify the prisoners.
First of all, you've got female, you've got male, you have certain kinds of males, you have violent males, white collar males, you have your federal, is that a pod that you kind of?
No, we classify them, but we put them, whatever pod, because we have some federal inmates that are white collar, that are, you know, not, not an issue, I could put them in, I, I think we even have a couple that's in our honor pod, so.
Maybe just, I'd, I'd love to see more stats on the fact that we're, we feel like we're, we're paying too much to house them out of county, but what is the norm?
Well, comparison, since you brought Cape Girardeau up, and I don't know what their total capacity is, but they're doing an expansion, I was just talking to their sheriff, they're doing an expansion right now for three-hundred-and-sixty beds.
Expansion is three?
Expansion of three-hundred-and-sixty because of overcrowding. I think the fix for me, the only fix I can see is to do the build-out of our facility to put in out of a hundred and eighty beds. That's the only fix I can see, and at least that five-hundred grand can go towards the payment of the loan or the bonds or, or whatever, but the, the only way I see it is, is to do the, the build-out. Because while we have twenty-one housed out, and let's just say, I mean, I'm at two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand as of July thirty-first, I budgeted four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the year, and, but if you annualize it, I'm gonna be at five-hundred-and-ten-thousand. So if, if you look at all of those aspects, but then you look at my federal prisoners and say, well, you get forty federal prisoners, well, that's bringing in one-point-four million, and while I'm paying five-hundred-thousand out, I'm still getting seven-hundred-thousand dollars towards revenue side. So I don't know if, because I've had someone ask, well, why don't you just go to the federal prisoners? Well, the problem is, is it's seven-hundred-thousand dollars that somebody's gonna have to come up with, of revenue money.
Yeah, I think we kept that around too, just trying to weigh how much we get, because we get so much per day for the federal prisoner, and what we're paying to house our prisoners somewhere else, plus transport and, and everything, so when you just look at the bottom dollar, it seemed like that the federal prisoner thing was worth keeping.
It's absolutely, it's absolutely worth keeping.
So what's it cost per day to house a prisoner here with you?
Uh, you know what, we just redid those numbers, and I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that right now. We charge fifty dollars a day to surrounding agencies, if we charge them, so there's some times when there's a, an emergency, for, for instance, Osage County had, this was a while back, they had an issue with their jail, and we took four of their prisoners, we had them for four days, we didn't charge them anything. But they house ours sometimes, and they actually pick our prisoners up, we pick theirs up, so it's all big, we work with each other on that.
So what does it cost to house a prisoner, say in Callaway County, what, what is their cost per?
I, I don't know what they're charging right now, I think Monta Taw, I'm, I'm not sure how much Monta Taw we're getting right now.
I was looking at your inmates too, John, there was, it seemed like most of them that have been here for like years are federal prisoners, so do they have some that sit here that long?
Um, I, I don't know, I haven't looked at how, how long we keep those prisoners. I know that there are some that we move off that are.
I thought they maybe just brought them in for a little while until they, you know, got here.
It depends, and, and when, when we say we have forty prisoners, we, in, in the month, we may average forty-five, because we'll get some that will be passed through, so they'll bring them to us and say, bring him, can you bring him, because part of our contract is to take them to the courthouse. So they may bring them to us, he may be with us for one day, and then, well, can't say that, we'll pick them up and take them to the federal courthouse, and then we don't bring them back, because they go from there to wherever they're supposed to go from that location. So we could be holding some federal prisoners for less than twenty-four hours, and then they, they move them out, so it's just, it's just part of the contract on how we utilize them, but.
Yeah, sometimes those fed cases can take a very long time.
Yeah.
I thought they were just coming in and going to their.
And not always.
And sending them back, but, so we're, we're holding them until they get finished with it, so.
And then we have some, we have some others out there that are housed out that I'm not paying for, but I'm responsible for. I have two at Department of Mental Health, one at BIGS, I thought the one from BIGS was kinda back.
No, they're gonna leave her there.
That's good.
Until, until trial.
And there's five out on furlough, and then four out on RIT. So even though they're not in my facility, I'm not paying for them, I gotta keep up with them. So we're, we're required to figure it, to know where they're at and, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, like bottom line on that though, is the federal prisoners, we could get, eliminate the, what is costing us to house them.
Yeah, but that would also.
But at the cost of revenue from the federal prisoners, so. Sheriff, I know the transportation costs get higher, but are you required or restricted to only house out in other prisons in Missouri?
Yes, it has to be, anywhere we house, it's gotta be pretty close. Unfortunately, we were looking at, I can't remember, I think this was two or three months ago, we're actually looking at housing out in Green County, because there was no beds around here. Monta Taw already had, I think they already had thirty of our people, and then we ended up, we were looking at the Green County, which is, you know, a two-and-a-half hour drive, but the problem is, is we have to, whenever they're in a different location, we gotta track their court dates, and we gotta make sure they're back in our location for their court date, so two-and-a-half hours away is a problem.
That takes two of your employees to take that trip.
That's correct. That is correct. So we try to get people local around here, Monta Taw's been very accommodating to us, I mean, they're charging us, but I mean, they're very accommodating to us. very accommodating to us. But we've had them in Pettis County, we've had them in Callaway, we've had them in Osage.
Didn't Osage just close their jail?
They're back open again.
Okay.
I can't remember where we housed them.
Phelps.
Phelps County, we've had a couple, so.
Is there a standard rate, or are they all just a little bit different in their daily rates?
They're all a little bit different, depending on where you go. I think Rolla was charging us 61, but other places, I think it was 50, isn't it 50 for Montau? Yeah, so...
When you say to the feds you will house their prisoners, does that mean they have to stay here? Can you ever sub them out to another place?
No, no, they have to stay on premises. And nobody else wants them, and the reason being is, is because you gotta have, whenever, there's some stipulations with a federal prisoner. One is, you gotta have gun toters anytime you move them around, so they gotta be a deputy. You can't, like right now, if I'm sending a couple of inmates to Montau County, it could be two jailers. But when you gotta, when you have a federal prisoner, it's gotta be two deputies. So it's, it's a little more, and there's some more stuff that you have to comply with. The building has to be built in such a way that allows for so much space for outdoor rec and lighting and all this other stuff.
When Coal County receives a payment from Missouri Department of Corrections, because that person was convicted, had already served time here, we get paid, Coal County gets paid by Corrections for that, if that time is counting against their sentence, kind of thing? Is that the word? And are they, is the state doing a better job of getting that money to us now?
They're, they're doing a better job getting the money to us. The problem is, the money's not that much. I mean, it came out in a hearing.
Twenty-three bucks a day?
Twenty-two fifty. It came out at a hearing this year, actually. One of the senators asked, or conservation, Corrections, how much it costs them to house one person out, and it was $103 a day. So for them to house somebody, it was $103 a day, and we're only getting paid from Department of Corrections, $22.50. So there is a push this year of trying to get, we're working with MAC, trying to get that increase to, I think it was $33. So, but everyone's budget is problematic, so I don't know if that's gonna happen or not. But yeah, 22.50, and that's only, and if they get found guilty, and they get time served, or if they get probation, then citizens, we get zero. Citizens of Coal County pay for that.
Do you remember how many we were housing before we built the new jail outside of Coal County or total?
Well, right before we, right before we did, it was, it was, I wanna say it was like 40, it was like 40 people, I think. But the old jail, how much it's supposed to hold, I think the actual beds for that was like 46, wasn't it?
Thirty-six.
And how many did we house in there sometimes?
Well, when I were down there, which was back in 98, 99.
You don't wanna say it's been recorded?
Yeah.
Safety limitations.
It was over 100. So, and the difference is, in the old facility, there were 10-person tanks, and it was over 100, right?
It was around, from what I recall, there were sending five issues.
Oh, okay, well. But anyway, it goes, the way the tanks are, if someone, if a kid got caught DWI or minor possession, and he couldn't post bond, they, he could very well end up in a, in a tank up there with a rapist or murderer or whatever. And what you're doing then is, is you're making more victims. So with the new facility, when we built it with the eight pods, we're able to put, we're able to separate those, so the ones that cause a lot of problem, that have injured people, assaulted people, we try to put them in a pod by themselves, and it goes right down the line. If we have a 24, we have a 24-bed female tank. Out of those 24 beds, if we get 25, and we can't find a place for that one female, then we either have to bring them up front, which is very problematic for that individual, or we have to close down a pod, a male pod, and do something with the 24 beds in there and make another female pod. We've had to do that a couple times, where we've had to shut down two pods just for females.
And rarely would we ever be able to use actually the 24 beds.
Right.
Because people don't get along, so it'd be, one person sells many times, you know?
When we built that, it sounded like that was gonna be plenty of people, and I saw we didn't do the interstitial area, and it still sounds like it should be enough, but it's like, build it and they will come. So how many, how many more beds was the interstitial, 80?
180.
It's another 180.
We can drop another 180 beds in there.
Even with having that other build-out that we put in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that...
No, so if you remember, if you think about our pod, the way it's set up right now with the satellite, they would do the same thing right below it, just drop it straight in, and there still leaves room for our, because we'd have to, with that many increase, you'd have to increase your medical, so we'd have to have a bigger medical area, and, you know, have to have a bigger area for inmate property. There's several things that we, that would have to be included whenever you do that. When you do the build-out, it's not just the, it's not just the cells.
And we have to have more jailers.
Secondary, yeah, secondary, the secondary elevator. And the jailers, we're four right now, full-time, two part-time, so we're six short right now out of 55 jailers, which is a lot better than it's been for a long time, and it'd just change us big time. The, I think Zimmer doing the social media has really helped us quite a bit, and I think it's getting the message out there, it's getting our branding out there quite a bit, and we're getting a lot more people to apply for those positions. This time of year, one, college starts back up, some of these 18-year-olds that really didn't wanna go to college, talked to one yesterday, and told them he needed to come talk to us, 18-years-old, come to work for me for 50,000 a year, full benefits, two retirements. It's pretty good, so. Did we say that again? You got that. It's a, it's a pretty good deal, and we're hoping to be able to get some of those individuals.
Well, to double the jail size, it would, it would, I mean, it's been long, we double it or...
Well, I just talked to, I just talked to the architects, and they're actually putting a number together where if we could do like four pods. The problem is, it'll be a cheaper amount of money to do the four pods, but it's the same amount of people to run it. There's, if there's one pod down there, or if there's eight pods down there, which is typical what a full pod is, or a full build-out, it's gonna take the same amount of people to watch them, so. They're, they're getting the numbers for me now, though, to see if that's gonna be possible, because you gotta think about security, there's gonna be, have to, some extra security stuff in place to make sure that...
When the, when the bonds were retired from the original bill, bill out over there, the one-eighth of a sales, one-eighth a cent, sales tax went away. It was a half, it was three eighths.
Yes, sir.
Because one-eighth was there to retire the debt issued to build the place. To bring the one-eighth back would take a vote of the people.
That's correct.
As you and I have talked about it, the three eighths isn't really cutting it anymore on the operations side.
No, sir.
So just asking the people of, the citizens of Coal to increase one-eighth to build is not good enough. It's gonna take one-eighth plus some kind of...
That's correct. We gotta be at half-cent for our operational funds to be, to be good. Right now, we're borrowing, or not borrowing, we're using our reserves right now, and it's only 200,000 or 300,000, I say only, but it's 200,000 or 300,000, and we have some built up in there, but you only can go to that so often before it starts to dwindle away. So I would, I would absolutely think that the first thing we need to do is to get our operational funds to half-cent. And then the second thing is figure out how we can build out that facility. Debbie, I was talking to, Debbie, I think you said we could bring in a consultant, and of some, I don't know who, but some, someone smarter than me, and to take a look at everything that we're needing, to find out what in fact we need to do to not only build out that facility, but also to make sure that our operational funds are good.
It's kinda what the commission did when we built it, to begin with.
Yep.
A financial consultant with individuals.
I think that, I think it was Central Bank that was, that actually came in and talked, right, wasn't it?
It was Joy Howard, who actually, she was out of St. Louis.
We just want the, your, your two and a half million dollar HVACs on your roof, we can make do with those for another 10 years.
Now, if Greg was here right now, he would be throwing stuff at you, but I can't afford it.
I know, and we've got so many things that are nearing their end of life at the courthouse, and so it's kinda like, or at the jail, courthouse, we've got, we've got some things we need to do over there, you know, that the HVAC stopped working Sunday, and it's, I don't know. Does all go out and buy lottery tickets, and that is up to, what, 500 some million? Maybe one of us will be lucky. I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
I was trying to find something cheaper than that. Like I said, I was trying to figure out if there was a way we do, maybe we have some resources, or maybe there's ways that we could do things more efficiently, or, you know, spend some money to save some money or something, and that's just kinda where I was at today, trying to figure out what...
I would think that, you know, if we did increase the size, that may increase the number of fed holds we take, right?
Yeah, it would, that would help also.
Help too, yeah.
But I know that we, that we, like at these conferences we go to, we talk to each other about the efficiency of our organizations and how we can do things a little bit better. We, I just found out about a 24/7 language line that I had no idea existed. So if you bring someone in that talks a foreign language, this company that you can go to has people that can, can interpret up to 300 different languages, real time. So that's, that's very beneficial whenever you're trying to book somebody, to be able to get the accurate information. So, so we constantly, I know that a sheriff, we constantly talk to each other about the efficiency of organizations and how we can do better.
We just implemented that language line in my office, I think.
Is that right? Works pretty good?
Yeah.
Have the feds ever come to you saying, we sure wish you had a bigger jail?
Uh-huh. They, they, it was about six or eight months ago, I was talking to one of the feds, he was on a visit, and I said, we're down to, we were down to 36 inmates, and I said, or maybe it was 32, it was 32 inmates, and I said, you gotta get us back up to 40, and he said, well, hell, if you want 60, I can get you 60, and I went, no, 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 I can't do 60, but I'll take, I'll take the 40. So I think because of our, the location we are from the federal courthouse, I think absolutely that if we was to build something, that we would get more federal prisoners, I have no doubt. I mean, they won't sign anything telling you that, but that's pretty much what they said, so. I've asked the feds to pay for the jail, and they said no.
Pretty quick, they asked me for a donation.
Pretty quick, pretty quick they said no.
Jeff, money will solve it all.
Winning the lottery at this point wouldn't cover it, so. The Powerball would.
Powerball, yeah.
Of course.
I don't buy, I'm not lucky, but, you know, when it gets up that high, then I'll stop and buy.
We all say that the Powerball is gonna fix everything, but we all know here, if one of us wins the Powerball, we ain't coming back. I'd be like, I wonder how those guys are doing.
I don't know what the answer is.
All right, well, and I think on my end, I can do more to push the probation stuff to try and get those holds moving here more quickly. The issue becomes, kind of as, I think John and I have been saying, like, those spaces are gonna fill right back up pretty quickly.
And not only that, but, I mean, you've got a schedule on your cases that you have, and whenever you try to bump a probation violation up there, it takes away from what you're trying to do. And maybe that extra person, or extra five people would help be beneficial to you.
I ran into Richard Lee.
I don't have room for them.
At that event they had from our tribe of Richard, I've got some ideas for pre-trial release, but we could, we could release more, and I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I'm gonna tell you, some, the majority of the people that I have in custody right now, there's some bad people in there. I mean, we, they do, the judges do pretty good about non-violent offenders, and, you know, we don't keep DWI first anymore, I mean, even parole, parole violations, the parole is doing pretty good about coming to picking up people up and taking them out. But it's, you know, it, it's...
I don't want bad guys out in the street.
Yeah, we don't...
Well, I think Pre-Trial's going through them and getting the non-violent offenders that aren't gonna, you know, really jeopardize the safety of our community.
They do a really good job with that, with sort of earmarking, you know, this person's clearly got some violent tendencies, this person is, you know, 90-something percent likely to reappear for their court dates, that sort of thing. They give the judges a lot of great information to go on.
It's not a nexus, they have a, they have a little deal they go by that actually tells them if the person's gonna be, will succeed on going out versus if he has to stay in.
On your website, you're gonna see that most, everybody in there is some kind of a violent offender.
Like I said...
They're there for writing bad checks.
I got bad people in my jail, and, and I don't know if pre-trial, I think they, they try to get people out as much as they can.
Well, and they don't wanna be set up for failure either by having to supervise people who are highly violent.
Well, and there's a few, and I say a few, 10 or 15, that they've actually gotten out at one time, and then they failed, and now they're not gonna let them back out because of their past history. So, I mean, I think they do a pretty good job for, for what they're doing.
I don't remember if they said they were gonna be here today or not. I forget what they said in the email, so. I don't know if there's anything else. I mean, we sit here, kick some stuff around, I just kinda wanna get the conversation started. I think there's some other conversations that we may try to have, even, you know, private conversations, one at a time with somebody else.
I don't know, I know the judges aren't here, but I, I do believe that they look at your roster and see who can be safely released.
So, yeah, so we have the jail roster that we put out to the judges and to the staff, and then on our website, we have inmate lookup, where anybody can get on there and look and see an individual, what they're charged with, and how long they've been in my custody. So, and I think that they look at that on a regular basis, trying to move those cases forward.
Did you say someone is looking, crunching numbers for the build-out?
Yes, sir. I, I asked him this, this weekend, if we were gonna do half, how much it would be to do half. He's working on that right now.
Because they did a full, how many years ago?
What's that?
Didn't they do a full study, how many years ago?
Uh, just two years ago, they did a full study, it was 30 million. But since then, we've had the, that was included in the data room, and the data room's already installed, so I think they were saying that that was gonna reduce it down to 26 million. But the problem is, when you do half, is that means you, you still gotta build out the floor, you gotta pour the concrete for all the floors up.
You gotta take the south wall out too, don't you, to get the cells in?
Yeah. So it's gonna be tricky to do that, without a doubt. But architects are pretty smart.
Well, I don't, I'm not gonna hold everybody else up, I just, I think we gotta keep our wheels spinning and keep thinking about it. We ran out of room, you know, at this price tag, we're gonna run out of money at some point, and a half million dollars a year, so we gotta figure something out. I have no clue what that is, I think, you know, looking into finishing that other part of the jail out. That's gonna be a tough pill to swallow, you know? Pour our nose in, take a big drink, I guess.
Well, we all knew it was gonna happen, I mean, that's why we put it there, I was just hoping that it would be... I mean, that's why we put it there, I was just hoping that it would be, you know, the next sheriff's problem, I might, but...
Well, if we don't start looking at it now, and we keep kicking it down the road, then it will be a problem, a bigger problem, so... All right, well, thank you all, just trying to get people smarter than me in the room, and we can kick this round. We just need to maybe see what they say about the build-out, John, and if we need to get, is Joy still doing that?
I think so.
Would she come back?
That was 12, that was 13, 14 years ago.
Yeah.
I think she is, so... We gotta have the money to pay the bonds back.
That's, that's where she's at.
Yeah, I think she's the one, kinda drew the plan up.
Yeah.
This is what you need, and this is how you get there. So I think finding what we need, and then having her find a way to get there. Yeah, the next thing, unless somebody else has some ideas, and I know the judges aren't here, if you get anything from them, if there's something, you know, we can do to help, as much as I hate to say it, you know? Sometimes you do have to throw money at the stuff. Any else? I'm gonna go stand in recess until 4:00.
Hello, favor.
Hi. Thank you, everybody.